This was last week.
Yeah, but not by much.
I was walking down to my building.
You just have a little bit less out of the way when you get to Des Moines.
He wants to see those apartments, I'll show you. So she pulled it up.
And it's only about 20 miles that you're on Tulane.
I'll try to do that. I'll give my navigator. A co-pilot.
Well, sure, that could've been, that could've been bad timing. She gets lost like twice a day. You know what I mean? So, yeah, that was bad timing.
I can't believe it, Mary. We didn't see her when we went up. We did see her going when we.
Housewife going down there today.
I said, you know, I guess you had to put a diver.
Yes, sir.
But I wanted to make sure I got back with you.
Well, I'm, yeah.
And we are revamping that. I don't know what the end solution is going to be, but we're checking with like nine other cities right now and getting their policies.
Well, those people shouldn't be able to pay $10. Those people need to be towed, like Tevin, but not people like Shelly.
Yeah. Well, what we need is a just policy. If they have five unpaid fees, here's what happens. And then everybody, for the most part, gets treated.
No, I had that happen to me, not towed, but I had a bunch of tickets once that I let go, so, you know, I empathize. I want to go get some water.
So, anyway.
Well, thank you.
Yep. It's a work in progress. And as we get it developed, I'll stay in touch with you and I'll let you know as it's coming up. And see if it's going to be something that you would think is acceptable. I mean, really, DPI pushes this, you know, the enforcement. It's a necessary thing.
Well, I'm glad of this parking lady we have now because the one before, as she, you knew exactly what dates she was going to be down.
Yep.
Go park there on Thursday. I don't know where she was all the other days, but this lady has got to be bringing in a lot more revenue.
She's doing a great job. She's just a person.
Yeah, yeah.
So far, so good with that.
Hey, guys.
As you were, as you employed.
He works as an employee.
Or operate.
You never know how people think or feel. And that's, that's the scary thing, my thing. That's the main thing. That's a whole part of people. And that's just another way to answer. I can make that immediately.
Hey, what's up?
That's right. That's right. Hi, Shane.
How you doing, Shane?
Hello, sir.
How you doing?
Good.
Hi, chief.
How are you doing? Bob.
Oh, pretty good.
Are you going this week?
What's that?
Are you going this week? Sioux City, the Vegas cities?
Yeah. I'm not going, so you can all talk about it.
I heard about that. I heard you have a, uh...
Very important.
Yeah.
Which usually happens once every 20 years.
Yeah, so, I had to, the mayor and I are driving up, and I may just take the wrong turn. Now, the only bad thing is it's Sioux City, nurse.
Sioux City, what?
That's where millions are at, and that's just...
Six hours.
Yeah.
Dude, my back is not looking forward to that, too. Not much.
Yeah.
Hello, Beck, how are you?
Pretty good.
Hi, Becky.
Hi.
So Shane, are you going up on Wednesday?
Um, Tuesday.
Oh, you're going up on Tuesday?
I thought, I think so.
Oh. And Chris, what day are you going up?
Tuesday.
Oh, I'm going up Wednesday.
So I'll give myself a little time.
Oh, in the evening, then? You're going to drive up in the evening?
Yeah, I, mayor and I are going up.
Yeah.
I don't, whenever he wants to leave is good. Is that good?
I'll get there around noon.
I'll be at your house. How about that?
Well, I'm going to leave Wednesday morning at 6:00, and I'll probably get up there around noon.
But he said I have to wear like a chauffeur's coat and jacket and a hat. He says you're going to sit in the back. I don't know what that was about.
Are you driving in a van or your car?
Car. Van, I'd be making you drive. I'd sit in the back.
Where did you find a way for Shane to get it for you?
I, um...
You probably have a room. You don't mind riding on the, on top, do you? You ever seen National Lampoon's Vacation?
That's right, yeah.
Stretching.
Stretching.
It's a great flick.
We'll just make a name after you, really, dog.
Yeah.
What are you doing back there, Jim?
I'm going to turn it on so people can see it.
I didn't do so well last time.
Oh, really? It didn't work?
It didn't.
Oh, it didn't? Oh.
Job security that way, right?
I don't think that's your fault.
Thousands of people sitting at the edge of their seats waiting to go see it. Might that be a gross exaggeration?
This is a rainy sweep week.
Oh, is it?
Actually, next week, we're going to set the tone for the presidential debates here.
You know what? You're sick, dog. We're going to set the tone, son.
We ain't going to give a single answer.
There you go. We'll do it just like they do.
Oh, gosh.
So we go one, two, three, four, five, five o'clock.
You know, it's something that Jim and I have discussed.
Five o'clock?
I think I can probably get the dog and all the training funded through donations and service organizations.
But I think we each get one.
What we would have to discuss is, by contract, that handler gets four hours overtime pay every two weeks.
Did, did you buy that for your kids?
And that's about 42 to $400 a year.
Yeah, did you get that book for your kids?
And let's say that dog services them for five or six years.
Yeah, I got that for my grandsons.
They get one day to be a grouse. It's like $30,000, so.
I can do...
Some people are taking advantage of that. Have to sit down with him and see if that is a priority in the budget. I mean, the dog itself is really, I personally really believe in the program.
Is it? Okay.
The whole place. I think if nothing else, from a public relations standpoint, it's a little active. We get out and we're in community with the dog.
I got to check to make sure I have...
You know, dog and pony shows, for lack of a better word.
The ad, I got to get the address and my garment.
But at the same time, I mean, we get a lot of positive feedback from that, so.
Otherwise, I don't know anywhere up there. I'm totally lost.
We want to spend that kind of money.
I just asked the man who's probably driven there a couple of times.
I mean, and his money well spent. I mean, the dog's got to be careful.
I don't think he's offered any help.
What? He said I'd take my, my private jet. That's what he said.
Why don't you take the private jet?
You know, I won't say frequently, but I think towards...
Do you go through Des Moines, is that up that direction?
The tail end of, I don't know if you remember when Kilo and King was here.
Well, I'll do whatever my garment, don't tell me. Because I can do what my garment says, because I...
It's even from that, and probably the first half of Reno's life. And then as it went on, I would say that we lost some of our effectiveness.
And that's what'll show up.
I think it's more of a handler-gold thing, you know?
So like Austin?
Yeah, I think it could be used at the train station, as trailways bust. There's a lot of places we could use that dog.
I'm still, I'm still working on that.
Oh, don't tell me. I won't ever remember. I'm terrible at stuff.
I'm just going to tell them.
I just plug it in and I go where it says, you know?
Three or four.
Yeah, I've looked at a couple.
And a city car. And then an SUV. The troopers was inside. I'm assuming somebody knew that.
So two is fine?
Yeah. Yeah, or more than likely, it could've started as just a traffic stop. We have certain questions we ask, pretty soon red flags start going off.
Aren't you stopping by, or aren't you standing?
Yeah, it turns into that pretty quick.
Don't you strip it out?
It's unbelievable, Bob. It's unbelievable. One of these evenings at a one session, son, or a little presentation to give you kind of an idea of the magnitude. I want to be able to spend a little bit extra time there.
I know, I'm separate.
It's unreal. The profitability is unreal. It's an enterprise all above itself.
When?
When's the flip start up? Like this morning?
Oh, yeah, I know, I trust.
Forgot to, not speaking of that. It was noted that different people did a good job of how close they come to speaking into the mic. And we get too far back from the mics, it doesn't pick it up 30.
I've always been told I've had, I project okay.
You okay now? Okay, thanks.
I'm glad to know that.
It is 4:30, so let's begin. Initially, on the agenda, there's a number of proclamations which can be taken care of next week. So the first item up then for Eric would be the resolution approving the final plot of the KKB subdivision.
We're working with the surveyors on getting the actual final plot. We've had, done a review on it. It's a lot at the Harley-Davidson at 155 South Roosevelt, looking to split off an outlaw at the front of their property. The use has a Harley-Davidson, as you're probably aware, has quite a bit of excess parking.
Right.
And this is a location someone's looking at to possibly purchase and develop.
That was going to be my question. Pretty routine?
Yep.
Yeah, pretty routine, although utilities are there, so it's just splitting it off and go through a plan review.
There's something later on the consent agenda about easements, too, and that relates, that relates to this also, doesn't it?
Public access easement between O'Reilly's and the Harley lot. Owners of Harley also own that grassy area behind O'Reilly's, and there's an access easement to the back of that that doesn't serve any purpose other than to connect property they already own. So they're combining the two lots they own, and then that access easement will go away.
Okay. All right, so we'll take care of that at the same, at the same time. All right. While you're there, Eric, why don't you just take care of whatever you need to talk about here off the consent agenda? We'll just take your turn, and we can go down.
A lot of this is, are requirements from IEDA for our CDBG grant. We have an owner occupied grant. We did adopt all these policies and conducts for our NSP that they've required specifically for grants to adopt them. So it's the same policies we've adopted before, but they want us to adopt them specifically for these grants. So this is for the owner occupied rehab grant. Number two on the consent. Number three is a contract for technical services. This regional planning provides inspections of properties and provides all the plans upfront with contractors and then does the levating inspections as well. They've worked with the CDBG on other projects for us. They do this for our NSP project as well. Money comes directly out of the grant.
Do you have a copy of that in front of you?
I just have the resolution. I don't have the contract.
Okay. There's a, an edit there, there, in one of these paragraphs, but this probably came from them, didn't it? So, okay.
I could contact them. Is there a page or?
It's on page two. I can show you afterward then.
Okay.
Okay. Well, no, you want to leave, don't you?
I'll be here.
Okay.
The number four and five are with the new city manager, allows him to sign off on our NSP program and our downtown facade grant, instead of having to wait to go through a council meeting. Has allowed the council to authorize him to sign off on some of the forms that need to be signed up on, various things. So that was something we had with Doug and haven't gone through with Jim yet, so allows him to sign off on that.
We can trust his judgment, surely?
Okay, I guess so.
This time, yes.
This time.
Are you a cowboy fan?
No.
We can't trust a judgment on anything.
Okay. That it, Eric, for you? What, um, okay. I see Steve out there. Do you want to go next, Steve? Take care of all the things that you need to do? I'm sorry, Beth.
Do you want to, want me to start with the consent agenda discussion? Does it matter?
Uh, consent agenda, please.
Number six, purchase of a pickup truck. This is a budgeted item. You've got the numbers in front of you. The combination of the low bid for a truck and a snowplow totaled almost $23,000. I'm sorry, almost $28,000. But yet, $8,000 below what we had budgeted.
Yay.
Yep.
Okay.
Number seven is a four-way stop. We're requesting approval to install signage for a four-way stop sign at North Eighth and Spring Streets. Right now, there's infrastructure there for the pedestrian signals, but they haven't been functioning, I believe, since maybe spring, before summer. We've had some lightning strikes, and we've had some vandalism to the push buttons. So we've had electrical problems. Those systems are obsolete. They have some mechanical parts in them still, and it's really not feasible to fix that type of system. So we're just suggesting that we go to a four-way stop and get permission to install appropriate signage.
Back to number six. What was the, what was the truck that you guys were looking to get that you decided not to?
It was, I believe it was a smaller truck, 3/4 ton was the one we were going to postpone.
So you guys were going to get two trucks?
Yep.
Okay.
This is right by the North Hill School, and so right now, they don't really have a safe cross.
They utilize, they take a four-way stop sign out.
Oh, they do?
They drag out every day, yeah. So we'll be, they'll be able to eliminate that function and danger of being out there with that signage.
Okay.
Part of the same resolution, we bring up no parking signs along Macbeth Drive. That was requested by the school. And we see it as a reasonable request. They have a lot of passenger pickup and delivery there.
Is that also where the buses?
Yep, I do, well, no, I think they're on, I think they're on 10th Street, the buses, on auxiliary lanes, with mostly parent drop.
Okay, parent drop, all right. Okay. Questions? What next?
Uh, looks like... Number nine with the RISE grant for Bluff Road. I guess I need to make a couple of clarifications to this resolution. I'll be re-drafting this just slightly down under the middle paragraph where we talk about the cost for the project.
Okay.
I learned that the program for RISE automatically adds 15% onto the grant amount for engineering and 10% for contingency.
Oh.
So these, these numbers are off just a little bit. I, on Friday, I received a corrected grant agreement from the state. And so the numbers you see there, the 923 was our original construction cost estimate. That's actually going to become the, the grant amount now. And we'll have a, you know, an estimated maximum project of 1,153,750.
Okay.
Instead of 1.107.
Can you, can you say a figure?
It is 1,153,750. And that will include not only the construction, but the engineering and the contingency.
Okay.
We probably should show an increased city local contribution there that would go to 237,50. It doesn't mean we're going to, we're going to spend that. We should come out paying less than we had thought after we're getting engineering expenses reimbursed and hoping not to use the contingency that they've included.
Okay. All right.
I think that's all I have on the consent.
Did we talk about the agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation with the nondiscrimination thing? Did we? Were you going to do that? Okay. Thank you, Steve.
That'll be good enough.
The last, the last two items are set dates for public hearings. Eric's got some things for the housing code, and then we've also done some urban renewal things, so. That's just setting days for public hearings, so.
Well, we'll start it with number one, the resolution amending the personnel manual. Just two changes, no changes to the body of the manual. We included it in the packet just so you had a complete manual. But the two changes are accounting supervisor, city treasurer was at range 10. The reason it was at range 10 is because back when we were trying to hire a finance director, we wanted someone with five years of municipal experience and so on and so forth, and we did not get applicants with that type of experience. So back then, Doug said, well, you know, let's get the accounting supervisor back into the salary schedule, look for someone with a CPA, and see what we end up with. Fortunately, we ended up with Stephanie, who was a CPA with municipal auditing experience. So she started as an accounting supervisor, knowing that hopefully, in a few months, she would be promoted to finance director, and that's exactly what happened. So it wasn't really the assistant position that it originally was in '95. It became more of a stepping stone. Now, we're advertising again for an accounting supervisor, but it will be a true assistant position again. So therefore, we're not looking really for the qualifications we were in 2011. So we're changing it from range 10 to range 8.
Eight, okay.
And then, of course, Stephanie, with my retirement, will be overseeing HR. The title finance director is, works, but we thought a better title for her would then become director of administrative services. So we're replacing the finance director title with director of administrative services. And I believe it's range, is it 13? Yes. So those are the only two changes. We're adding accounting supervisor, city treasurer, and changing finance director to director of administrative services.
What was finance director?
It was range 13, and we're just changing the title of finance director to director of administrative services. She'll still retain all the finance duties and responsibilities. And she will oversee the accounting supervisor as well, IT, HR, finance.
So number nine, in essence, will be disappearing?
Yes, we decided to keep the position in there as a placeholder. We could have eliminated it.
It's been mentioned a couple, you've had another step that was eliminated from the schedule, but there is a gap in the pay ranges, if you can see where it used to be.
And that is true. There's a little asterisk up there, asterisk.
Take it.
Under number three, with the notation vacant, vacant range not listed.
Okay.
We could have done the same.
Well, it's okay. I, I just an observation, I think. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. I guess it's number eight, is that right here?
Yes.
Okay. Is a Title VI policy. It's something new that's been handed down as a requirement from the Iowa DOT. It's something we've been following, obviously, all along anyway, because it's, it's the law, a non-discriminatory law. But now, they are requiring all agencies to implement and adopt a formal policy which must be signed off on by the governing body. So, in fact, we just found out about this week before last, but it requires all public agencies receiving any kind of federal assistance to have one of these policies in place to ensure no one's discriminated against because of their race, color, national origin, gender, age, or disability, in all of the programs and activities that the city has. And regardless of whether those programs or activities actually receive federal funding. So that's what this policy says, and it set out, it sets out some steps and procedures.
And it's still, discrimination complaints go right to the state? We, we have no...
As far as the Human Rights Commission goes, that is correct.
Correct, yes.
Now, these complaints are handled a little bit differently, though. You'll see, I don't have the entire...
Oh, okay, so this is not a Human Rights...
But they go to the IDOT, I believe. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, gotcha. Wonderful. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
All right. That takes care of the regular agenda. We're now into discussion items. And Steve, as long as you're here, and if you want to go for animal shelter and seal coding and HMA update?
The animal shelter is currently sitting at about 14% completion. That's on the latest pay request that I've seen. It looks like they've earned about $114,000 out of $820,000 contract. Currently trying to work on some change orders. We've probably got about $23,000 worth of change orders that we need to get completely formalized, and that's, that's going to include things. There are some changes in the water service. There's some soil remediation work that needs done. They need to add some, some wood to the top plate of the masonry walls that was not specified. We need to look at up, or changing the lock systems to our best system. They hadn't spec that to match our city system. And a small sink and faucet change. Trying to work with the, with the architect and the contractor to get these things put together. I don't think any of them have been formalized yet. We're hoping to move some of those forward this week and probably get to this soil remediation, which is the next immediate step. There were some recommendations made in, in a early soils report to remove two foot of soil and, and replace with a better material. Those recommendations were not put into the contract specifications or contract plans, and so we're, we're needing to do some of this work after the fact, while we have foundations in the ground and some of the masonry walls up. So it's become a little more challenging than what it would have been had it been done originally.
So they're going to have to do what? Take down the walls that are up?
The trusses have not been set, so the walls are up, but there's actually one wall on the north side that hadn't been placed, so they'll be able to move equipment in and out of there. They will not have to take any walls down. They'll work inside the walls. It'll be in smaller equipment, a little bit slower pace, more difficult construction.
So basically, this is an additional $23,000.
Right. $23,000, you know, is, is less than 3% of the original $820,000. That's not setting too bad yet.
How much of that is for the soil?
We're looking at about $6,000 for the soil that the city's going to participate in, and there may be some additional amounts that we will feel that the architect will need to participate in, since that wasn't in specification.
Was that a mistake on their part or a mistake on our part that it didn't get done beforehand?
It, it was not included in the plans and specs, so I would say it was something that they omitted from those plans and specs.
And so, I guess the bottom line for us is, you know, we put a cap on the number.
Yeah.
Does this, this goes towards our cap, or is this go above it? You know, we put that like $500,000 is our cap that we're going to contribute, and what if we go over $23,000? This will be part of that. Okay. I just want to make sure.
Change orders will be participated in. The, the one question we want to be the soil remediation and how much that we would feel the architect might be responsible for.
Change orders are not...
It's going to slow the project down.
Yes, it already has slowed the project down, so we've got some concerns with that.
The original completion date was end of November?
I haven't seen it in writing. I can't answer.
But it's, it's going to be after that now. So we're going into the winter months, right?
Could be some issues with...
The armory.
Some, some heating at the armory. We talked this morning at Public Works. We're going to look at the systems that are out there and see what we can potentially turn back on.
It's going to slow the project down.
Yes, it already has slowed the project down, so we've got some concerns with that.
The original completion date was end of November?
I haven't seen it in writing, I can't answer.
But it's going to be after that now.
So we're going into the winter months, right?
Could be some issues with--
The armory.
Some heating at the armory. We talked this morning at Public Works. We're going to look at the systems that are out there and see what we can potentially turn back on. Probably have the, we need to visit with the Humane Society, but there's options for them to turn on a service again that we previously disconnected, so they could work with Alliant, get some of the gas reconnected, returned on for some heating out there. I think there's two types of heating there currently. Some other issues might be constructability on the site if, you know, we get too cold. But we're hoping not to have to deal with that.
Hopefully, they don't run that late, get that far behind. How far behind do you think they are now, in weeks?
I think they're about two or three weeks.
Okay.
And some of that time may include the rework that's required, but, you know, could go a little farther, too, and they see how slow it might move to do some of that rework and remediation.
Change orders are not unusual on projects, though, are they?
No, I would say not. You never catch everything. There's going to be things that require change orders.
Did they put in a, like, I want to say a ten percent contingency with change orders in it? And I think they might have went to fifteen percent, so that's going to capture a lot of this.
Right.
Did they know about the heating issues with, or did anybody know about the heating issues at the armory before this?
I believe they did. There also was not air conditioning. They had, they, the Humane Society, had brought in, I think, some external temporary units for cooling. Those went away about a week ago. And I'm pretty sure they knew that the heating systems were turned off in that building. A couple other updates on the list. HMA is probably over ninety percent complete. Most of what we have to finish from the original project is on Fifteenth Street. And then we'll be around town adjusting sewer structures that are in the new asphalt surface. Sealco project, I'll call it seventy, seventy-five percent complete. We have started the seal process. All the streets have been reclaimed, graded and compacted. The seal process is working from south to north, and we are currently working in the neighborhoods just north of Agency Street and moving north. We've got a few neighborhoods up off of Mount Pleasant, a few up off of Sunnyside.
I drove by there today and saw them working there.
I would say, weather permitting, maybe five working days, we'll have the ceiling complete. And again, we'll have to go back and adjust sewer fixtures that are in the roadway. We've been starting a little bit late each day. We've got some temperature constraints. It's been cool at night, so we haven't been starting until mid-morning. But it's going well as far as project schedule and performance.
That was my question, since we have a different contractor this time. Seems to work out okay.
They're doing fine, yeah. We worked with them a little bit on some of the grading around the structures and, you know, did some areas where they had to go back and regrade.
Good. Thanks for staying on top of it, that's good. Any questions, council? Thank you, Steve. Eric? Is that okay, Stephanie?
I'm going to go over a little bit of our rental process and some background information on that.
Thank you.
If you have any questions during this, just let me know. But I was just kind of going to give an overview of our rental process and kind of what goes into it. And part of this, I guess, leads into our update that we're looking to do in the next couple of weeks as well, so kind of the timing seems right. Our housing code, Chapter one sixty-one, is what governs our rental permit process. This is an internal code. It's based primarily off the Property Maintenance Code, but it is a city of Burlington specific code. The provisions of this chapter apply to all dwellings within the city limits used or intended for use for human occupancy. The part we primarily deal with is the rentals, but it does apply to all dwellings. Currently, we have thirty-seven hundred and three units. For our records, that changes on a monthly, monthly basis as some rentals are turned back into owner occupied and we get new rentals and find some that don't have rental permits. So of those three, thirty-seven hundred units, eleven hundred and seventy-two are single-family properties, two hundred and seventy-eight are duplex, and two hundred and eighty-one are multifamily properties, which contain three or more dwelling units. It's a typical process is owner of a property contacts our office and lets us know they want to convert their property into a rental, a rental property. We send them an application and the lead base fee, and they submit that back to the city and set up an inspection. And the rental inspection fee can be as little as twenty-four to forty-eight hours, but generally, a week to two weeks to kind of get to that process. Our rental fee, as established by the council here, is ninety dollars plus ten per additional unit. So for a single family, it's ninety, duplex, a hundred, multiple, a hundred and ten, and so on. Currently, as you see further, single-family duplex are inspected on a five-year basis. Every five years, multiple dwelling units, three or more, are inspected on a three-year basis. That varies from community to community, but that's what we've been doing for quite some time. Currently, we have two code inspectors that handle all the rental inspections and nuisances in Burlington. And as you see, in the previous five years, from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven, on average, for rentals, they inspect seven hundred and sixteen buildings and fourteen hundred and forty-three units per year. And nuisance, since that's part of their duties as well, they handle thirteen hundred nuisance complaints per year. So they are quite busy, I would say.
They're able to, they're able to handle all that?
Well, a lot of it's on complaint basis. As you know, we haven't had the time or manpower to actively go out and seek out nuisances like we'd like to, but it's something they try and make an effort to while they're out and about to seek out stuff. But two individuals splitting those duties is, we're not able to do quite as much as we'd probably like to do. The Inspection Enforcement, Chapter one sixty-one oh five, states the code official shall administer and enforce the housing code and make inspections in order to safeguard the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants and the general public. There are two sections, Inspection of Owner Occupied Dwellings. It does state in our housing code upon complaint or requests that could be done. It's not something we have done. It's not something we really have the time to do or actively seek to do. Again, Inspection of Rental Units on a five- and three-year basis. Rental permit required, this is required for any owner to rent or to let another person occupy a dwelling as a rental. Any dwelling, a rental permit is required. So whether they charge rent or not, whether it's relative or not, if the owner's not living there, it does require a rental permit.
ET, do you have a figure on how many fines have been given out over the last year?
Fines for?
Fines for renters? Or violations, how about that? Violations to renters?
Don't believe we, we don't have a fee system for violations.
Okay, well, then, how many violations have been? Do you have a number on?
Well, I guess our process, if we get a complaint, we go to the property and inspect the property to see what the complaint is. If there's a violation, we give them a certain amount of timeframe based on violation to correct it. Although that's a week, thirty days, sixty days. We try and work with the tenant and the property owner as much as we can, so. We haven't taken anyone to court in the last couple of years.
Really?
We haven't ordered anyone to vacate in the last couple of years, so.
I know a guy's house, he's got a board laying across, he's got a hole where you walk into the entryway, and he's got a board laying across there so you don't fall through the, through the house. It's been like that for quite a while. I told him to call and turn it in. And this was probably, I don't know, February or March, and nothing has been done yet.
If we would have gotten a call and complained on something like that, they would have been given a pretty strict timeframe, I'd imagine, to correct that. I don't know if they've received the call or not, or, but that should occur on that basis.
Do we have anything on our website that, like, for a renter wanted to complain or had a question about how the rental policy works, that they could find something?
We do have, I guess, a page on the Community Development Site, for rentals, nuisance, separate page. We don't specifically say, I guess, for complaint, call this number, which is probably something we should add. We do have a link directly to the two rental nuisance officers and their contact information, but that's probably something we should add.
Well, I think I'm going to volunteer. I'm going to save the city some money, and I'll start, I'll start helping the boys out with that end of it. Because there's some repeat offenders that have been, that have had beat-up apartments and houses that they've been renting out forever, and nothing's ever been, nothing's ever been changed as far as I can see. Not that I'm blaming you, ET, I'm just, I don't think that's, I don't think that's right. You know, everybody has an obligation, and so do the people that are renting. And if we want to see things kept up, it starts with the renter taking care of their end as well.
Yeah, and we do have a link on our website. And back in here, we have a rental inspection checklist, which is in your packet here. There's a couple pages of what we look for when we go and inspect the property. We do have a page on tenant responsibilities. This is what tenants responsible for. Our code section also breaks out what the owner or operator is required to do and what the tenant's required to do and maintain. So those are two specific sections of our code. Kind of going back through this, and we can jump ahead or back, but rental housing permit does not apply to owners of properties bought on contract. We have had some people try and avoid the rental process by selling the property on contract. Once that's recorded with the county, we don't inspect the properties any longer. The code does state when all provisions of Chapter one sixty-one have been complied with the owner or operator, by the owner or operator, this code official shall issue a rental permit. And we do have notices that we can give them. If they don't comply initially, we'll go inspect the property. We'll have a list of issues that they have to comply with. We'll set up a follow-up rental inspection between two weeks and thirty days, generally. And then if they don't comply at that time, if there are issues, we can post a notice to repair, correct, or comply, and they'll have thirty or sixty days from that timeframe to correct and comply with the code. Now, if they do not follow through with that, we have thirty days. We can post a notice of denial or revocation of a rental permit in order to vacate and give them thirty days to do that. There's also an emergency order to vacate if there's some serious issues that are life safety issues. They have to vacate within seven days. So there are a few notices that we have at our disposal to go through. And then the owner or operator does have the right to appeal as well. Within the housing code, they can appeal an interpretation of provisions of the chapter, dispute code violations, request additional time for compliance, or request a variance in the application of the housing code. Not something that occurs very often, but we have had one to two to three a year that do go to the Housing Appeals Board. As you see, one sixty-one oh nine is responsibility of occupants related to the maintenance of the structure. So for the occupants, basically, it's looking at clean and sanitary conditions, reasonable care, proper use, proper operation of the facilities within the, within the unit. For single-family, pest extermination, disposable, disposal of garbage, making sure they don't have extensive extension cords and are following the occupancy limits on a property. Occupancy is based on the size of a unit and the size of bedrooms. For one, a bedroom containing seventy square feet can have one unit. A hundred and ten square feet can have two units. So it's based on the size and number of bedrooms, is how many individuals can reside in a rental unit. Minimum structure standards for all dwellings. We look at kitchen, bathroom, exits, windows. You have to have five square feet on the main floor, five point seven square feet opening on the second floor and above. That's one of the major items that they look at, as well as exits. Ventilation, heating, electrical, minimum space access, fire extinguishers, early warning fire protection. Those are also kind of differences between typical single-family homes or homes owner occupied. Many don't have the fire extinguishers, but once you convert it to a rental, that is required. And also with the fire protection systems, the fire alarms. Some people in owner occupied don't have those, but if you convert it to a rental, that is required. And the lead-based paint certification by the owner.
How do owner occupied houses fit into codes in the city? I mean, you know, we have all this detail on rental units.
New construction follows the International Residential Code for one and two-family, International Building Code for three-family. Something we don't follow up with an inspection after it's complete.
That's my point, so that wants us up and inspected, five years, ten years, twenty years.
Yeah, there's no inspection process that we've gone through, unless they convert it to a rental, there wouldn't be a city official in the building. This code does allow for that if there's complaints or issues, but it's not something we have done.
Eric, how much time is usually spent on the normal inspection?
Well, it depends on the rental. For a new inspection, they schedule about an hour or so with some time afterwards in case. For a reinspection, they might be a little more familiar with the property. It could be fifteen, twenty minutes, up to an hour as well.
Because I'm just looking at the rental fees right now, just looking at the single all the way down to the multiple units and, you know, I just want to make sure that we're recouping all our expenses.
And I guess, per unit, per year on the rental fees for a single, just to give you some example, it's eighteen dollars per unit per year, based on five-year. For a duplex, it's ten dollars per unit per year. And then for multiple, since they're on a three-year basis, for a multiple three, it's twelve dollars per unit per year. For multiple ten, it's six dollars per unit per year. So it goes down as you have more units.
Has it been that price for a while, or is it?
This was updated, I believe, actually, July twenty-ten. It went up five or ten dollars at that time.
You did a review, or you are in the process of doing a review of what other places are charged? And what are you seeing so far?
It really varies. Some communities actually have a landlord licensing fee and then as a standard fee just to rent out. And then it varies. I think we're kind of in the middle of the road, depending on the community and how they set it up. Some do, a lot of them do two-year fees across the board, or two-year schedules. Some do three-year schedules, so it can vary quite a bit. So I think you have to look at the unit per year, especially when you're comparing the five-year for a single-family duplex.
When you look at the two that are doing this, how much, what percentage of their time do they put into rental versus nuisance?
That's from a big question.
It varies from week to week just based on, but it's probably sixty, forty rental nuisance, at least.
So they're probably sixty thousand each total personnel cost in that range? So you've got a hundred and twenty thousand times sixty percent?
Last.
Year, about sixty-five, seventy thousand dollar cost to run it in your reason?
Two thousand and eleven, we had thirty thousand dollars in rental fees. Two thousand and ten, we had forty thousand, based on some of the larger apartment complexes come up. And so it varies, but it's probably between thirty and forty thousand.
So you're covering about less than half of the cost of our personnel?
So then, on a case like that, then do we have to be more aggressive on the other nuisances out there to recoup our expenses back?
Well, but you also have, your overall revenues is two seventy, two hundred and seventy thousand for your department?
Yeah, and that's pretty variable on the--
This is two sixty the year before. And your overall cost for seven people in your department? I can't, I haven't gotten to that yet, but I'm pretty sure that you're looking in the five hundred thousand range? Probably a little bit higher than that, actually. So they don't, they don't cover half of their cost overall within the--
Is the, is this the pricing, is that something we can revisit? I mean, I, and maybe it's because I'm not a, I don't have a property that I'm renting out. But I, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I feel like they're, that they could go up a little bit.
Well, we do want to be cost comparative, still stay within reason on that. And any of these services that you provide, you typically can't think that you're going to recoup the full cost of providing the enforcement side. You just hope to cover a good chunk of it.
Eric, in two thousand and nine, I'm looking back at some old numbers here, total number of rental inspections. There was, the total units inspected was like twenty-one hundred. And this past year was like fourteen hundred. Why is there such a difference? It's like seven hundred units inspected when we're building more and more units all the time, it seems like.
It's just variable based on the three and five-year when they--
They're not inspected every year.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, every third year, you'll catch maybe a large apartment complex, but then you might get it, catch a bunch of single-family or duplex at the same time. And if you look at the average, we've kind of gone up from two thousand and one to two thousand and eleven. You can kind of see a little bit of a trend, but they do have spikes.
Okay. Okay.
Within that timeframe, just because we don't have a uniform timeframe for renewal between the duplex and single-family and the multiples. And if you're expecting Robinson Heights, you might have eighty units and a hundred units that, in, in two days. And that only comes up over three years.
Right.
The next month, you might have all single-family and duplex.
I know the city manager asked you the question regarding your finance within your department, but you feel two individuals do an adequate job where you need more? You know, just looking at the inspection and nuisance rates that are out there.
I was trying to think how I'm going to ask that question.
Yeah, well, I'm just going to come out and ask it.
To do rentals, that you, as like, as we'd likely, you'd need more individuals.
If you're going to get the nuisances done at the same time.
Yeah, to do nuisances.
But the rentals are fixed, you kind of know what those are. The nuisance, you never know.
I've always sort of, sort of, if you took Burlington and made it into a quadrant, and then you had a nuisance inspector per quadrant. And, you know, that way they could get out instead of being all over town, at least they have an area that they have to.
Show me the funding.
Well, I know.
Earlier, nuisance inspectors, or inspectors nuisance, one handles north of division, one's south of division. But rentals, they kind of depends on when it comes in. Yeah, the rental.
That's, that's the difficult part is being able to afford it. And, and you have to, for you all, you all, there's a couple of additional things we haven't really gotten into here yet. But what extent do you, do you want to enforce things? I mean, we have our own code, it's modified. It's, as Eric mentioned, it's taken out of the international property maintenance code, but it's not doing the full code.
No, there's a couple items that are a little different.
And you could, you could be more relaxed than what we are in how you do inspections, or you could be stricter. But you have to do it across the board.
And be consistent.
Yes.
And to be consistent, and you get backlash if you go more, well, either way, you're going to get backlash from a different.
I was going to say, it depends on who you speak to right now, if we're, if we're too lax or not lax, you know.
But to, to be more, to be more strict in how you do it, you're going to get a backlash from property owners. But you're also going to have, it's more labor intensive to do that, too. And you're going to have to spend more to get it accomplished.
I, I look at it on the other side, too, with the nuisances. That's one of the things that, you know, a lot of us would like to do is clean up Burlington. But, and how do you patrol that? And that's by taking care of a lot of these individuals that are always habitual offenders, and maybe give them something that has a little bit more teeth to their fine.
And I think that some extent, you have, with the question Bob asked about existing family homes that aren't rentals, you have the ability to do some enforcement for at least how the exterior looks, if you so choose. But you have to do that again across the board.
That'd be under the nuisance code.
It'd be under the nuisance code, and it's, it's hard to keep up with.
Yeah.
I mean, from a, it's labor-intensive, and it just, it does take a lot of time to keep it going.
I sure don't disagree with that, but it does bother me, some of these houses that have been ugly, if you will, for years. I mean, not just in the last year or two. And for that just to go on and on and on, it sends a message, I think, it sends the wrong message. It's like the city says, hey, you know.
And we threw, we threw a figure into not this piece, but we talked about housing demo and not having it enough to, to fund it. We put forty thousand of local option sales tax dollars towards our housing demo program, and we really need to put more.
Forty thousand could get between four and six houses.
We, we talked about, well, I suggested, I threw a hundred and fifty thousand a year. And you, you need to put a significant amount more, but we've got some, already have some huge financial constraints over how we deal with things.
Yeah.
But I, I guess something I always wonder about, what about a low-income family that's, can't afford to keep their house up? You know, they're not, I mean, they probably would if they could, but it needs a roof, or they have trees that are starting to fall apart. I mean, I don't know, it, who helps them? I, I.
They do have, we do have the program with the owner-occupied housing grants that, that regional planning is administering for us.
It's a small segmented area, but community action has the weatherization program, too, that they do some.
But what about, you know, trees and things like that, that, that start to just fall apart because they're old, I mean?
And we've had to abate some through nuisance on those, and that's an issue that.
So that can be done through the city?
Dashboard, that could come up in three, five years.
I just know of a tree by a house that I keep thinking it's going to fall on the house next, and I kind of worry about it.
But when we do a nuisance like that and take care of it that way, we assess that charge then back against the property. So it's, from what you're dealing, or concerned about, it's still not a, it's not a benefit for the property owner there.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, the only thing I could think of was, you know, churches or something like that.
Folks, we're at the conference this week, there's one or two, maybe three sessions about this very topic.
Oh, good.
That we want to make sure that somebody of us gets to those sessions.
And that's kind of related, I mean, back and forth nuisance to rental. If we want to enforce some owner-occupied, I think in pretty much every rental housing inspection they go on, they note, beat, scrape, peeling and painting, or peeling and deteriorating paint and, paint it. But on owner-occupied, that's not something we've dealt with. And if we wanted to take additional people, take additional money in the nuisance budget to do that. For us to do it on an owner-occupied, within our code, we'd have to have money within the nuisance budget to do it necessarily property. And our nuisance budget just doesn't have that funding to do it.
And we've talked about, just from a public safety perspective, how this, how important this is to public safety. I know you wrote about it in one of your responses, the broken, broken window theory. And I don't know if you got that from, said it because I had mentioned it, or if you were doing it already. But they talked about, they did a couple of examples. If you have a street that's in bad shape and you have a vehicle sitting out on it, how quickly that vehicle becomes vandalized. And then they did another example, they put a vehicle into a neigh, nice neighborhood and had it abandoned there, and it wasn't touched. But then they broke the window on the car. And after they did that, then it was vandalized almost immediately. And, and that's the idea behind broken window theory, is you see deterioration occur in an area. It becomes more and more different criminal mischief activities become.
Yeah, the Murray Turbo Building would be the perfect example of the broken window theory, the perfect example. And how, once it starts, it just continues and snowballs.
So when, when we talk about public safety, this is a big piece of it. And making sure that we have adequate funding in there to prioritize it. And that the problem that we run into with the way our general fund is structured is, is that to talk about putting money there means you're taking it from.
From somewhere else.
Somewhere else. And the two major places that you're doing is from either police or fire. You've got ambulance and rec, or your, or ambulance, library and rec are your other two main areas besides that. Which one are you pulling it out of? They all, they all fit together, there's just limited money.
Are there any grant opportunities for, I want to say community betterment, but, you know?
We've applied for, as much as we, the NSP program, CDBG owner-occupied.
Yeah, everything like that.
I mean, we've been pretty successful, but it's a small-reaching thing. And our NSP, we've built five new homes, but five new homes in a community of this size is, it's a small part of it.
I'd be curious to see what other communities do, and hopefully we'll get a, you know, with being League of Cities this week, find out what they do and how they attack it. Because there's problems in other cities just like this.
Yeah, we're not alone, that's for sure.
But it's, but some do, some are really aggressive with their, their fees and fines and.
Gone through the court system on a zoning violation, started three months ago, and they're still the same place we were three months ago. So I, I can tell you that process does take quite a bit of time to go through. And if we had to do that with every property, it wouldn't be very far.
That's a different story, the courts.
Okay, Eric.
Just find a couple of points, looking at new construction standards versus existing. When someone builds new, it is a different situation than when there's an existing single-family or two-family dwelling that they're just converting to a rental. We look at the zoning district and lot size to determine the number of units that they can have under today's standard in a typical core area lot of seven thousand square feet, the maximum you could add would be a duplex. But we do have a lot of converted old homes into threeplexes or greater, but under current code that, you know, lot size and the zoning really restrict what you can put there. For new construction, again, we do plan review and inspections, the building inspector, building inspector, spire marshal, city planner, all involved. Enforce the international building code, international residential code, existing building code, energy conservation code. So we have all these codes for new construction. But for the existing homes that are rentals, we follow the housing code. So there is a little different standard. When you're building new, if you're building new, new apartment complex, that would go through that process of our building inspectors, spire marshal, reviewing the plans, making sure it meets all our current adopted codes. But then upon renewal in three or five years, it would follow the housing code. So one of the differences is sprinklers, firewall separations, and energy codes. For existing one and two-family homes, I wouldn't have to have the sprinklers or firewall separations. Don't have to follow the energy conservation codes if you're just converting from a existing structure into a rental. The biggest thing is, which isn't a, a large thing on the grand scheme of things, but fire extinguishers, smoke detector systems are typically the only new requirements for the properly maintained single-family and two-family homes that someone would have to do. Again, energy conservation codes do not apply to rehab or remodel or historic buildings, but they do apply for new construction. Sprinklers do not apply for existing rental remodels, but do apply for a change in use for mixed occupancy buildings. So a couple of differences there between new construction and existing rentals.
Did you look at, like, the, when you mentioned the energy codes, and I know you got a copy of what, Boulders?
Yeah.
Did you look at those energy codes and see if there is any, is there relative worth to having something like what they're looking at?
I, I just glanced through that, I'd have to look a little closer on that. The energy conservation code was adopted two years ago, it's a relatively new one. They are pretty aggressive in some instances, but we've tried to work as much as we can with people to educate them and work together on it. It's not necessarily a life safety issue as much as, as much as the other code. So it's something we've tried to work with them a little bit more on, but.
So that would deal more with how, like insulation and things like that?
Going to the spray foam, buildings are getting tighter and tighter, which creates some other problems, too, so.
What Boulder did was they, they've done a transit, basically a transition plan where they've notified landlords five years, I think on a, basically a five-year timetable, that there's changes coming down the road. That's what they're going to be, be expected to do for that. The main reason to look at it, I would think, is that you took, in a single-family home rental unit, you're, or a lot of others, too, you're asking, the landlord's asking the renter to pay the utility bill.
Utility, yeah.
And getting better energy efficiency helps off that, that kind of.
Let it, council, anything else from Eric? Okay, Eric.
We do have on our website, I know a lot of people don't go to it, but a lot of these handouts, if you guys see anything that you see at, I think adding a complaint link is probably very valid. And if there's anything else, try and put out as much information as we can on our website, just to make it easier for individuals to find the information, so.
Thank you, Eric. Okay. Are you ready, Mrs. Lutter?
There's a new one.
Yeah, this is a new one, sorry.
Does this look better than the last one?
Well, I hope so. So these are the financial policies that were updated from when Travis presented them two weeks ago. So like, Jim, your changes should be on here.
Thank you.
And we can just briefly go over some of the other things that we changed and see if you have any questions from the last time we talked about it. But on page six, about the middle of the page, policy ten, equipment policy, I had added in what our tangible asset policy is, that it has to be, have a useful life of two years or more, and the minimum cost of twenty-five hundred will be capitalized. We actually, it's a little more detailed, twenty-five hundred is like equipment, but when you get to infrastructure, it goes up to like fifty thousand or a hundred thousand, so, but this is just a brief. I just added that. And then on page seven, when we started talking about our working fund balances for operations, so. We added in that we would like to target fifteen percent of the balances in these funds, except sewer. Sewer, we'd like to have the twenty-five percent plus the one-year debt service. And then below the box is a transitional plan, beginning with the budget year twenty thirteen, fourteen. Within five years, we'd like to have five percent. And then by year ten, we'd like to get up to the fifteen percent. Anything you want to add, Jim? Anybody have any questions?
My thing to note on the sewer, twenty-five percent undesignated balance, that we already have that, right about that level on hand. And it's twenty-five percent of operating expenditures outside of that service, plus the full years of the debt service.
Okay.
So that one where our targeted is okay, but that's the only one. And then the other, we kind of talked about this the last time on page thirteen. Number, policy thirty-four, TIF review process. We kind of broached that of, if this was in the policy, that it would be reviewed by a committee. The Economic Development Advisory Board is what we're suggesting now. And the more Jim and I've discussed it, we, we think that's a good idea. We know this committee might have to meet a little bit more often, but it would be a place for the TIF requests to come through formally first, discuss, see what, you know, we can negotiate anything, and then move forward with a recommendation. Ultimately, the decision would come in front of council. So if, we can talk about if you like that idea, not like that idea, or.
But, and I think at that committee, we did talk about maybe, is there supposed to be four or five people on that committee?
Right.
And you are.
Well, there's supposed to be four, besides myself, yeah. So there's five.
Four that vote.
Four that vote, yeah, that's one thing.
Well, I think the way it's written.
Yeah, I can vote.
I think Stephanie is supposed to vote, but I don't think that's a good thing to have a staff member.
Well, that's what we questioned at the committee level, that there were four people, and if you voted, it could be a tie. And that maybe we should add another person to that committee so that it would be a tiebreaker.
That's assuming that you, as a representative, aren't voting either.
Well, she would be voting, too.
I vote, yeah.
I would not be voting then.
It's not as troublesome to have a, a council member as voting. It's just, it's, I, I prefer our staff as ex officio.
And, and I feel like if we're going to be doing more of these TIF reviews, there might be more discussion. I, I don't know, you know, I guess.
What would we do at the board level is recommend to add somebody to the board and then change the ordinance to say, I'm an ex officio, so I wouldn't have voting rights. So technically, there would be six on the board, including myself, as, serving as the treasurer or secretary, I think it says.
Right now, we have three citizens and a council member.
And myself, so there's five. So if I don't vote, then there's four, and that's, but right now, it sounds like I can vote, but if we would.
It just feels like there should be another person on, citizen on.
I think that sounds right.
And it's an ordinance change, so we would have to work on that, we could get that ready for the next.
And that, that group is looking, by the way, and you were there, so you know, but they were talking about an application process on the, for someone applying for economic development funds. And one of the things that, Eric, you're putting together is a TIF application form. Look, you're at least looking at what some of the other communities in the area have done. It would make sense that as a project came up, that you had, had the basic details down, that, that you have something hard and fast to look at.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, because if somebody comes in and, and they just want our help, but they don't tell us.
Right. Right.
They don't show us any dollars or what they want, or something, it's hard to answer to that.
But it would make sense if we can get that form developed, that they're doing, the ones who would be doing the initial review, that gives some time for people to think through that whole process. So it doesn't, it, we're just not set up to where the project comes to the council, is presented and you're making a decision on it right then.
Yeah.
Which it's, that's difficult for you all to be put in that position.
It is, it really is, and especially if there's.
A timeframe on it.
Well, and it just needs another person, what if you, because it's four people that really.
And that was one of the concerns that, when I was on the Economic Development Committee, that people had, so they didn't get information ahead of time, so they didn't have a chance to study it. You walk into a meeting cold and here it is, you know, that's really not fair to that, to that committee either.
And maybe we could put in the processes, once the application is filed, then we set the meeting up. So then that application could go out with the minutes and the agenda. And we would, everyone would have time to look at it.
Absolutely.
Because it isn't very effective now when they meet quarterly either. I mean, you know, things come up and so.
So if you want to, we can work on that ordinance change probably in the next work session. Are you okay with then leaving this policy in there and having this?
I guess one more question about the ordinance, does it say in there how often that, that the committee meets?
I, I think it might.
I think that we need to address that also, if we're going to do this and say.
Also as needed to.
It does say as needed, okay. Well, I guess we've done that, we've done that, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think just the way we, the TIF rebates have come up lately, where it's almost backwards. You know, we're getting the dollar amount, the last, and at the end of the estimated. I think that's hard for you guys to make a decision and really know the true economic impact of how we're helping these, you know, companies, so. Okay. Any other questions? I guess, I mean, you haven't had time to read through this, but if you do, we can send the changes to myself and I can.
That's another thought though. If, if we have an application process going through the Economic Development Committee, don't we have to give them some guidelines on, on how they should evaluate and what, what we're looking for, or are we just going to let them?
I, I think that we need guidelines, because I don't think everybody is.
There are no guidelines.
I don't think that, well, if you're going to have that committee look at TIF, I don't know how many people on that committee even understand TIF.
That's part of, I think, what Eric right now is trying to put together on the TIF, is that application process and it, the forms that you have from some of the other communities have some basic guidelines around how much to give based on what the project type is. Every community is different, I mean, that's something that needs to come through here at some point to say, what are we, what parameters are we willing to work with?
Yeah, and that was, that's my point, yeah.
Well, I think too, that maybe Eric could meet with that committee and do some educating. I, I just don't think you should hand it over to that committee if they don't understand. I think that, you know, and explanation means they need to be educated if they're going to be expected to look at this.
Yeah.
I mean, these policies, starting on page two, the TIF, I mean, these would be the guidelines that they would follow too, except if we would have, you know, if we decide to leave, like policy 31 is no greater than 50% of the TIF to be during the payback period. Obviously, we can make exceptions to that policy, but then there'd have to be some reasons.
But it would first come to, who would it come to first? Would it come to a department before it comes to that?
Well, it would come to Eric's department if he's handling the applications.
So some of that stuff, he would.
It'd come to my department.
You could have it whoever.
Yeah, I mean, it would maybe come to my department first.
So some of those, some of those things would be cleaned up before it got to this, wouldn't it?
Well, I mean, we're, we're not going to say if it's over 50%, I mean, we're going to turn you down, no. I mean, that's where it's going to have to be, that's what's going to come in front of the committee. And then the committee could say, now this project we feel should be at 50. And then work with the applicant at that point. I wouldn't think, I wouldn't turn anything down. What do you think, Jim, I mean?
From a staff level, no.
No.
But again, when even the France, before it came here, there were several of them that, several of the proposals that they had made along the line, it would just said, there's, there's no way we can even.
Right.
Support bringing this to the council to ask them, it just isn't feasible to do, because they were just asking too much.
So I guess it could be the applications come to my office, go to Jim, and then we, then the decision's made to put it on the agenda, if it's not, if it's reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Becky, I think too, with that, you know, once we, we could change the ordinance, get somebody else on board that committee and then go over these policies and explain exactly what is TIF and have questions answered and. So I guess we should be on the lookout for a good committee leader or committee person to add. That might be, you know, the economic impact and, I don't know.
The three citizens you have on there now are, are committed for a while, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, in fact, yeah, they just renewed. Owen and Elizabeth just renewed in July.
Yeah, I thought I remembered that.
Yeah, so. Anything else on the policies?
What do you, you want us to spend some time reviewing and then sometime in the future we're making decision we're going to adopt these? Is that your plan?
Yes.
Our goal is to get you to get them adopted. So, but we want you to.
But anything, any adjustments?
If you still have questions and if you.
Send an email to Steph.
If you have questions, yes, or suggestions, get them to Steph so that we can all, all be ready to look at them the next time. But we'd like to get to where you don't have any more questions and are able to move forward with putting it on for adoption.
Okay.
Then comes the hard part.
Follow me through.
Follow me. The policies are one thing.
It's just like.
So this is something to do in the next couple of days while we have downtime at the.
Oh, boy.
Late night reading?
Late night reading.
I have the treasurer's report. We can start by looking at the June 30th, 2012. This is as of September 10th. Our general fund at the end of the year was up to 507,970, so a little bit higher than we were projecting. We were projecting around 400,000, so there'll still be some adjustments going through there. I'm not sure how many, or hopefully they're going up instead of down, but. Other than that, I don't think there was any big changes. I did add at the bottom of the treasurer's report, the bank account balances. This is something Travis had suggested, so you could actually see our accounts, which, you know, what the cash is and then just how we reconcile back to the book balance, so. If you ever want to see any more detail, I've got plenty more, but. But that's on there just to kind of get an idea of where our money's sitting at and if you have any questions regarding that, so. Does anybody have any questions on the year-end information or?
The money that, the money that we borrowed to cover balances, that's sitting in one of these bank accounts then, right?
Yes, yeah, I mean, that's why our Two Rivers regular account, that's why that 11 million. That's where all our deposits go, is into the Two Rivers regular account. So that's always going to hopefully have the highest balance, because that's where the, it's a money market account that earns the highest interest, which is pretty much nothing right now, but. And then our Farmers and Merchants Bank account, the super savings. This is a timing, I try to only put money in there for payroll and the checks that are going out, but that's the account where all our checks are written out of.
Okay.
So it's a timing issue, you know, that might be, you know, $100,000 next month, at the end of the month, depending on, you know, how things get cashed and.
Okay.
And then I can just quickly go down these bank account balances. The sewer and trash, that's where all our deposits come from, the waterworks. We have a separate account, they actually make the deposits for us and then we record it in our system. And then, you know, I transfer the money out of there into our other super savings when I need the money, when payroll comes up or claims come up. And then the other regular account at Farmers and Merchants is, this is where our credit cards go for the recplex and the golf course. We have a separate account just for those credit card transactions and I pay our sales tax out of there. So now that we're winding down towards the end of the season, I'll probably do a transfer out of there, but I'll still need to keep, you know, my monthly sales tax will come out of there too. And at the credit union, we have an account that was established probably a long time ago for, just for the RSVP. That, you know, just earns a little bit more interest, but that's the amount that's been restricted for RSVP over the years. Then again, our Two Rivers regular account, that's where all our deposits go. Then we have some, police has a separate account, the SED evidence has a separate account. Then we have a couple CDs that were designated. And then the library trust bank balances, the library actually has, and through their trust, they have, they have a savings account and a checking account with US Bank, and then they have two CDs also. And I just rolled those into one, because we don't, they're all handled down at the library. So those are our account. Those are the checking accounts and savings accounts that we have opened in the city's name. So then our fund balance for August. And does anybody have any questions? Of course, it shows our, you know, general fund quite in the hole and it's, it's just a period where we're not getting in the revenues, the sales tax, you know, it's been very low and. So that'll, that'll come up, not till October though. And then again, the bank account balance is back on the second page and. Comments, questions, concerns?
My only comment is I appreciate that we get to have these before us.
Okay.
I think that's a good thing.
I don't know how good a job we've done reviewing how last year went, but as I've been going through the numbers for this year, trying to figure out what to expect for this year yet, in the general fund. General fund lost 150,000 and these aren't final numbers, but you'll probably end up being pretty close to this by the time it's done. This is the last major change you'll have to that number. All right, cool.
Cool, yep.
But we lost $150,000 and that's taken into account, how much money? You didn't happen to look up what we got for tree revenue? It was supposed to be in the 150,000 range, I'm not sure if that's quite how much it was or not.
No, because I had, we'd gotten a payment this year, but it allocated most of that back.
And we had some miscellaneous revenues though up there. That, that account had 200,000 miscellaneous revenues, need to track down what was in there.
Yeah, I, I did not look that up.
Which is significantly higher than normal.
What's significant higher?
Some miscellaneous revenues, and that's been mainly where the tree money has gone the last couple of years.
That's from the logging on the island, yeah.
And that contract is done, so we don't have that money coming in this year. In previous years, we had been. Part of, part of why we have a deficit there, previous years, we had been, like with the attorney fees, we have 65,000 budgeted and any expenditure over that gets, just moved over to sewer and sanitation. We did not do that this year. So you see our attorney fees in the general fund are more in the $130,000 range. We had, we didn't transfer 50,000 over from TIF. What were the, and engineering is the other spot where we typically in the past would have moved some engineering costs into other funds, which is why all those capital projects had deficit account balances. Those are some major factors that are impacting that budget. We lost 150,000 because we didn't do some of the transfers we would have done in the past. And I think the only reason it isn't a larger figure, primarily because of some of those miscellaneous revenues that just weren't anticipated, but we're not going to be seeing this year. So we have a struc, we have a structural issue with our budget already, besides worrying about balancing out the other funds. I just kind of wanted to point out that general fund has more issues than just balancing out those other, other places.
Well, I don't, there was, but I think it's more true to what it, reality now, isn't it, to what we are really dealing with? Because those transfers, to me, were always kind of, it felt like covering up things that, that we needed to know about and.
We, we moved to the cost of where there was funds available to cover them. Instead of.
Right.
I mean, like with the attorney's fees, unless there's attorney fees for a sanitation or sewer issue, there isn't a good justified reason to transfer the cost there. So that isn't happening as we move forward. To give you a sense of where we are right now, and I've kind of talked with Stephanie a little bit about it, for this, for this year, I think we're going to be about even. I need to make sure that, we've had a lot of personnel changes in, in the budget numbers, but it looks to me like, given the fact that we are down two positions in fire and down four in police from what was originally budgeted, and actually, police has a couple of other positions that are budgeted but vacant right now, but we'll be working on refilling. With those reduced costs, we're about a balanced budget this year, right now. Taking that, those reduced positions into account already. So as we were talking, when Travis has been here the last couple of meetings, we talked about those unfilled positions helping us to get, to take care of that million dollars change. Well, tho, those vacant positions are helping us just to get to a balanced budget for this year.
Well, we made the last drawdown on the cops grant too.
And we just, and that's part of what I still need to, I don't have good, bad, good numbers there yet. I still have some revenues and I need to check on for a couple of our grants that I know that. One of them's this Southeast Iowa Task Force, the money they're getting is being reduced each year.
Yep.
And then your other grant that funded two police officers is.
Is that, is that going to eventually run out too? Is, is that the? For the task force, the last three years, we've seen a 20% reduction a year for three years. And it would have been drastically morphing had it been for the reenactment that Obama did. Some of those reinvestment dollars, they actually, instead of implementing them all in one year, they've saved them for a five-year drawdown. So it would have been a drastic impact if it wasn't for that. The reinvestment act, believe it or not, they, the ODCP did a great job and the plan they put out for that money, or we would have seen it this year critical. So, but yeah, we're still going to probably get another 20% reduction again next year. That's, that's what they're telling everybody. And they've been true to their word, for the last two years, we've been 20% a year, almost to the numbers.
Yeah, I think last year we received 90,000 and I think we're supposed to receive 68,000 this year. And that number will go down again next year.
And our productivity, our grant that we put together, probably this year was the best grant we put together in five years and still got reduced by 20%. But the positive note to that, if it wasn't for that, we'd have seen a 40% reduction in this year alone. So, I mean, those people did a good job with that, but we still took a 20% hit.
And then the other grant that you're saying that you just did the last drawdown on, that was, we had a grant for two officer positions.
For three years.
For three years. We just took our last drawdown. And I'm pretty sure that our revenues for this year are budgeted for a full years with a grant.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I need to check with you on, that's where I need to check.
Yeah, yeah, I don't remember, I thought it was in, yeah, September.
And then as we go to look at the next two, or the next, the out years, we have to replace that lost grant money as well.
Yep.
So we've got, there's a lot of issues to deal with as we try to look at a, a five-year budget, which is kind of where you're going to be, we're going to be headed into this fall.
But keep in mind that task force position's always been budgeted for, that money was just used for reimbursement. So don't think of that as going in the hole, so to speak, if that makes sense. I mean, those positions in that task force are budgeted for every year and just we take that money and trying to reimburse that wage as best we can. And the only thing it's used for now is personnel costs, that's, we don't get any equipment, we don't get any rental space, we don't get any, and we provide a full-time supervisor to that unit that we get zero reimbursement for, so. I mean, but that looks good when it comes back to our local match and what we do and what we contribute. That's a positive thing in the grant itself.
Trying to throw more realism and fun.
Well, I would rather know what we're dealing with.
Feel better already?
Yeah. Yeah.
Not?
Well, I, I'd rather know what we're dealing with.
So would I. Let's tell it like it is.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Wow, okay. Pointments, we have Animal Hearing Board.
Angela Beard.
And Flathills Golf Course.
Two people, Robert Washington, who would like to be appointed, and then Sally Boss, reappointed.
Those would be good choices.
Yep.
All right. Counsel, you have any committee reports?
Well, I think I had the last comprehensive plan committee meeting, I think that's gonna be coming up, and for somebody new on the council, I guess, it's one way to learn a lot, but...
Particularly since it hasn't been done, redone for a long time.
Well, I mean, you just have a lot of discussion about different things, and, you know, I didn't, a lot of people put a lot of time into that comprehensive plan.
What, refresh my memory, when's our goal-setting session?
October 11. I think 10 to 2 is the scheduled time at the Recplex.
Okay.
I guess we're not doing it when it was snowing, like we did one year.
And I hope we all learn a lot at the...
I think those are key things to do.
Yeah. Lot of good workshops, I looked at the listing, are coming up on Wednesday afternoon, Thursday all day, and Friday morning, so, it'll be a good time.
It was a pride.
Anything else, Counsel, anything?
No, not for me.
Okay, I guess we're done, and thanks, everybody, for your input.
Thank you.
Take a step, drink tea.
Yeah, I'll be out of town by then.
Yeah, thank you.
You will.
Yep.
But I just told you what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I got that email, I got it from Kristen yesterday, I said, "I know he's gonna, it's a pride, but I wanna get this done."
I'm sure he's...
I said, "Let's go back, see what we have, what we're gonna have," so we can kind of get a picture of what we're, what we're...
But that is, every grant, interestingly, I've asked you to grant the traffic grant, the water grant.
Yeah, I usually wear some time to our house.
Yeah.
And there's a...
Well, and it goes, but it goes both ways, too, that you're, depends on...